This conference will now be recorded.
All right, are we ready?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Are we ready? Okay, all right, I'll call this meeting's order of the Southwater Regional Planning Council. We will have the pleasure of allegiance by Senator. Senator Geller, could you?
A true allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All meetings can be accessed via S F Regional Council dot org. The meeting is recorded. Mute your microphone when we're not speaking. If you're dialing in, please mute and unmute yourself by dialing star six. If you wish to be recognized by the chair, we encourage you to comment in the chat box or to physically raise your hand so it can be seen on camera. If you're a member of the public and would like to make a comment, the chair will announce when public comments will be heard. If you're appearing as a caller or by a phone or by phone number in the attendees list, please update your name by right clicking on your name or identifying yourself in the chat and we will change it for you. Great, so welcome everyone today. So the purpose of this meeting is identify issues of regional impact from each of our counties. So from Monroe County.
Forgive me for interrupting, but would you please allow the clerk to take the role this morning?
Sure, Kathy, will you please call roll?
Thank you, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair.
Coldiron? Cardino?
They're doing it. They started now.
Fur?
Fur.
Garcia?
Here.
Yar?
Here.
California? Humber?
What do you want, bye?
Hoffman?
Hoffman is here.
Leonard? Martinez? Monastine? Ross?
Here.
Udine? Zegati? Adriana?
The, uh, roll call?
Mayers? Quinn?
Shereen E. Fang for that one.
Thank you, Shereen. Bailey?
President.
So we have a lot of background noise. Could I have somebody from our office to reach out to all of the chat to let the people know who are not on mute, like caller zero four, and there are a couple others. Well, so there are three callers that are not on mute. If we can have those callers to go ahead and mute because we're having a lot of background noise.
I don't have an audio pen.
Okay, all right, perfect. So the reason why we're here today in our last meeting, our executive director mentioned that we have a meeting coming up with the treasure codes for regional planning on April 16th. And they want to discuss pretty much how we can select things that are of regional impact that are impacting all of us that we can select as both council and say these are our priorities. And so in the interim, I've asked Isabel to reach out to each of the counties and have him to identify two priorities. One dealing with infrastructure and the second dealing with resilience or sea level rise. And so we're going to start this meeting, the format's going to be, we're going to have each, we're going to start each county, we'll have them to present theirs. I think Monroe County current is, they don't have theirs at the moment, but I would like to at the end allow us to include what they come up with in our packet that we'll be submitting to the, to the, at our April 16th meeting. And so without objection later in today, if no one has a problem with that, I would like for them to also to include. And so we will start with Miami-Dade County for them to highlight their priorities and then we will allow question and answer. And we will not do a vote until the very end and where we were voted for to pretty much adopt them all or however the council would like to, to make that motion. And so we can start with Miami-Dade County because Monroe, we do not, at the time they, they're participating, they're listening, but they will submit theirs later on. And so Isabel, who do we have from Miami-Dade County to present their priorities?
Yesterday I sent y'all a piece of paper that has American Rescue Act priority regional needs in Southeast Florida, it's identified by our member counties. There are multiple members from Miami-Dade County including COO Morales, Debbie Greiner. I don't know if you want to invite Councilmember Garcia to say a few words or if you want to.
Okay.
You know, or CEO Morales, who I've worked with in order to get input from the mayor's office as well.
Definitely. And so like Senator Garcia, if you have a few words and we'll let the Miami-Dade County delegation kind of see who would like to present on, on their behalf. If you guys are not ready, I, I think Broward might possibly be ready. Oh, you guys are ready?
Yeah, we are ready. I'll defer to Senator Garcia if it works. We do have two projects that we think fit the criteria that you all identified. We took to heart the notion that these are projects that but for a significant level of funding might not, will not happen. And one is an infrastructure project and one is a resilience project. The resilience project is very much tied to the issues of water quality and sea level rise. We have about 120,000.
Um, could we have everyone to mute your, your, your mic? We have a few other, um, happy, um, also. It's perfect. It looks like everyone else has muted. So great, thank you, you can go ahead. Again, Mr. Morales, I apologize about interrupting.
As you know, there's been, there's been a lot of attention paid in recent months to the health of Biscayne Bay, Florida Bay, a lot of, you know, other water bodies. And in, in South Florida, one of the unfortunately issues is that a lot of folks are still on septic tanks, which we have 120,000 properties in Dade County alone that unfortunately are challenged by sea level rise and, and a lot of nutrients end up in the bay. And so we've looked at a project where we can identify 13,500 septic tanks that over the next 20 years are going to be very adversely impacted by sea level rise and, and pose a real threat to these bodies of water, particularly obviously Biscayne Bay and potentially Florida Bay. And it's about a $700 million project. We're not allowed to use utility funds for that kind of infrastructure. So certainly this is within the category of resilience, a project with regional impact because of Biscayne Bay and the Florida Bay. And a project that again, but for the kind of funding that we're now looking at is not, not readily doable. So that's our resilience project on the, on an infrastructure. And, and I do have folks from our water sewer department who can answer questions about that. On our, on our, on our infrastructure project, and you see a slide, is the North Corridor. You know, obviously we were all hoping for a day that we're going to have true regional transportation. There's a project that's moving forward on the, on the old FEC lines, the, what we call our Northeast Corridor, and that has a lot of traction to it. It's an existing infrastructure and that has probably a more healthy future. The North Corridor, a more Western line that services really a lot of our, you know, lower income areas, high industrial areas. And it's, I think can also be a critical corridor running up and down, you know, the dry county area. Is a far more challenged, it's acquisitions of right of way. It's, you know, extending up 27th Avenue. It's been a high priority and it's a high priority of Congresswoman Frederick Wilson. But from a funding perspective, it's very challenging because you're, you're looking at a 1.2 to 1.6 billion dollar project just for us to take it to the Broward line and then enable hopefully one day connections going forward. So it's a project that could have significant regional impact, but it's one that in the absence of significant federal and state funding is not likely to happen. And, but this kind of programming could make it happen and happen much faster. Otherwise, you know, it goes through the standard new starts program and it's, you know, probably a long, long time, even if it, you know, if it rates well under that system. This infrastructure, you know, bill could, could be a game changer for, and a catalyst for this quarter. So those are the two projects. I know we have staff who can ask some questions and I, and if Senator Garcia, one of our newest, but very proactive and commissioner knows the state well, wants to add anything, we certainly would welcome it.
Great, thank you for that presentation. And so now we're open up to questions on the project. Please see a button to raise your hand, but if you can put a question, if you like, you have a question on the project before we move on to our next question, please submit your questions in the chat. My goal is to preferably to adopt all of the projects together at the end. So are there any questions of the council members? Okay, so we have Councilmember Fur, you recognized for a question.
Thank you. I, I think one of the things that we were looking at that kind of affected us all was the outfalls. I did speak with Hollywood yesterday with regard to theirs. I guess I wanted to know where Miami-Dade was with regard to their outfalls. I, I understand the septic to sewer situation, Jimmy, but are, were you, were you all considering trying to do an advanced water treatment plant in Miami?
Yeah, we have a, right now, a very aggressive outfall capital program that is looking at deep well injection, the treatment and deep well injection. I don't know if Jose Enrique Quero or Debbie Greiner are on the call. Jose's our interim director and Debbie is the department. Okay, Debbie, if you want to provide some.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Chair, good morning, council members, thank you. Yes, we are on target to meet December 31st, 2025 deadline. We have injection wells, our central district wastewater treatment plants that are under construction and we're bidding the wells at our north district wastewater treatment plant. Also, we have industrial injection wells at our central district plant that are currently burning nutrients and expected to meet the nutrient level requirements by 2025.
Thank you for that.
That's the update that I've been providing, you're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Fur, do you have a follow up question or is that sufficient?
You know, unfortunately, I mean, uh, this is just for me, I wish we, I, this is because we didn't have money before that we, you know, both Broward and it sounds like Miami-Dade, neither one of them went to advanced water treatment plant instead of doing deep well injections, which is, you know, had we, had we been doing this in the earlier, I think all of us probably would have gone to advanced water treatment plant. But it's, and I, and Hollywood has done the same thing because I, I called them yesterday because I was hoping that they, you know, advanced water treatment plant would have been in the, in the possibility, but it doesn't sound like it. So let's hope, I mean, let's hope that, that boulder zone's big enough, you know, because that's where it's all going and that it, with me, it worries me.
Okay.
We don't, we don't really know the capacity of that.
You know, one of the challenges I know of the outfall legislation that we are facing and Debbie might provide insight is it does set, as you know, a, I think it's a 60% reuse goal. And that is a challenging goal, particularly in Dade County. You know, we don't necessarily have a delivery system for it. And so meeting that part of the goal, which would I think contributes significantly to reducing what we are pumping down into that zone is, is a challenge we're still facing. We're trying to, we've got a couple options, but not, that is one. And Debbie, if you want to add to any of that, that is, that is a project, but right now we don't necessarily have something specific in mind about how we're going to tackle that.
Well, it's harder to tackle it when it's not.
One second, Mr. Councilmember Fur, Debbie, she's going to complete it. Perfect. Wait, one second, Debbie, I think you're mute. Muted. You, you, I still can't hear you.
No, I was actually saying, yeah, I think you covered it just fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fur, okay, you recognize, you, you have a comment?
Well, I think for.
Okay, no, sorry, I didn't really have anything to add to what Chief Morales said. It's not showing as muted on my side.
Yeah, I think it was just a slow connection, I can hear you, I think it was a slow connection, but you're fine now, Debbie.
Yeah, for Hollywood, their, their, their water can't be reused in the way it is because it's, the saline content is way too high, as well as there's some potassium and phosphorus in there. So they would have had to go to advanced water treatment to, to meet that extra, that 60% reuse. They're not going to get there as far as I know.
Councilmember Fur, would you like a separate conversation maybe after this room? And where we actually have a conversation about like, how can the council work together and, and different things? How can the council be supportive maybe and to really see? Because I, I think, Mr. Morales is, they haven't, he's presented pretty much what they're currently doing and you had additional question and he said like, they haven't gotten there to that point. And so I just want to make sure that like, he can properly respond and we can have a full conversation. So is that okay with you?
That's fine, I think, that's fine, because I think one of the things that Doug Smith had brought up on this was the idea of, we all, had all recognized that there were a number of outfalls that were just huge amount of, the amount, the amount of money to fix them was just beyond all of our capacity. But it sounds like with everybody's doing deep well injections, everybody's kind of managing it in their own way. So that's kind of where it is. And so yes, a, to, what we may want to do is look after this and, and just see how everybody is tackling that problem. Because it is, it does have a huge significant effect on the water quality on, on our reefs, et cetera. So yeah, we would like to see that.
Thank you. Senator Geller has a comment, you recognize?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I have a little of a concern and I don't know what Broward has and I'm going to defer to Commissioner Fur for some comment on that. But some of the things, for example, that Broward would like would be, we would say they'd be regional, but which would probably be uniquely Broward. And Dade, for example, on their rail corridors, any of their rail corridors that don't match up, I mean, one of our priorities I know was the coastal link. I don't know if, unless Dade also has the connecting line as one of their priorities, then I don't know that that, I think that that is the connecting line. It, it's not regional and this is what my concern is here. I want to make sure that anything we're talking about, I know in, in Broward, we have the city of Hollywood has a major septic to sewer issue. But even though it will affect the, you know, septic will always affect the water quality, I'm not sure that that is the kind of, of project we're talking about. That's why I'm trying to define it. When I heard as an example, the reefs, that is something that I think absolutely is something that would be affecting because it's not more Dade nor Broward nor Palm Beach. I, I think if we're going to do regional type things, we really need to be looking at something that is not particularly located in one county. I mean, I, I don't know how Broward is going to meet the issue of closing the ocean outfalls. Because, you know, I agree with Commissioner Fur, not only is, do we not know the capacity of the boulder zone, we still don't know where that water actually ends up. Nobody does. And so, I mean, deep well injection, as far as I understand, is the least bad method that we have today, but doesn't really do what I think we need, which is the advanced water treatment. But I'm not sure that that's regional. If Palm Beach has already closed their ocean outfalls. So all I'm saying is, I think what we, we need to be looking at is something that, you know, not projects that are major in each of our counties, but something that is truly regional if we're going to talk about, you know, the regional spending. And, you know, I'm not sure there's a lot of those. I, I mentioned coral reefs just because, you know, Commissioner Fur has previously brought that up and I know that that is regional. I'm just trying to figure out what else we can do that is truly regional in nature. I'm Doug.
Sure, okay. Before I allow, allow Mr. Morales to respond, and so I, I think, so I, I think there, there's two approaches that could possibly be taken. So one, we realize that there's a lot of funding possibly coming down and, and some of these projects, although they are in like certain areas, they do have the ability to go beyond like, like the region. Like for instance, like when you look at rail, like a lot of people that live in Palm Beach, sometimes they work in Broward and Dade and vice versa. And so I think like initially something like, although it might not appear that it has a large regional impact, it possibly does, but I will allow Mr. Morales to kind of speak to like the regional impact of the two projects that they submitted, if that's, if you're fine with that, Mr. Morales.
I mean, look, obviously we were all trying to throw something together over a 24 hour period. You know, one thing I've learned is water doesn't know boundaries, political or otherwise. I mean, so, you know, the water that, the dirty water pouring into Biscayne Bay finds its way into the ocean, affects our reefs, it finds its way down to Monroe County, you know, and so, so, and then beyond. So, so certainly I think, you know, the, the water, water quality issues of the ocean, the bays, even the canal systems that flow, you know, through the region, down to Florida Bay. So I, that, that to me is a regional issue. We all contribute to it, so to the extent that we put a lot less nutrients than other substance into the water, I think it benefits everybody as well. As for transportation, I think the reason I, you know, we, we looked at the North Corridor is, because I was following, you know, Isabel put in the, in the system, but, you know, a but for this, this particular source of funding, this will never happen. I think the coastal link is something that has some real promise to it. You know, I think other, I think we're, it is because we have an existing infrastructure line, we have an existing FEC corridor. You know, the, the costs of that project are, are going to pale compared to putting in essentially a new corridor in the western side. So that's why, you know, for us, the North Corridor, which links up, would link up to Broward through that area and then could go north. I mean, given the level of, as we all know, of people and goods that flow north and south between the three counties, one rail line ain't going to be enough, you know, we, in the long, long term. So thinking about the future, you know, it's, it's about creating a system. And I, so that's why we, I thought the North Corridor was the kind of project that but for isn't, may not happen, whereas I think the coastal link, obviously, could we use the money for the coastal link? No question about it. But I, I think there, we know FDOT's engaged, we know the Dollar Mouse probably might even be a small starts project, you know, under the federal for each of the counties. So I think there's more potential there than, than if this is one of those but for, I think the North Corridor is a, a but for, just like I mean, the septic sewer, I mean, is a huge, huge number, just, just, you know, 12, just 13,500 septic tanks and their impact is a $700 million project. Those are expensive, expensive projects and there's no clear source of funding for them either. So that was the spirit that we brought in.
Chairman, if I may? Yes, there is a question, one second, who, who is, who's speaking? Renee, Renee. Sure, Senator Garcia, you recognize?
Hey, and good morning, Hon, I, I want to agree with, with Chief Morales on the issue of septic to sewer. Yes, however, it is a Miami-Dade County land specific issue, but when those nutrients go into, into the bay, obviously we all know what's happening with Biscayne Bay, that's not a secret. And as those nutrients flow through, through a, a current system, you know, the system, I want to call it the jet stream, but the flow, the water current system, that affects all three, all three communities from Palm Beach all the way down to, to Monroe. And I think we have been the, the number one contributor to, to the, to those nutrients going into the water and that's why I think it is a regional issue, it has a regional impact and we all know how important the water in the bay is to all, all of our communities. And I think, I think it's important for us to try to figure out and it's, for me, it's, it is a top priority, not only for this community, but for the, the well being of, of South Florida in general. We, I think we do have to have a consolidated effort to help all of our communities to make sure that we do have an impact on, on having clean water. Because if we get to the point where our reefs are messed up and the water is polluted, then we lose the attraction, the attractive nature for people to come down to South Florida. That's what makes us a destination, a tourist destination, is our waterways where people can enjoy their time when they're down here. So I, I think I do agree with Chief Morales on the issue of, of the septic to sewer conversion, trying to use some of those dollars to make sure that we have a direct impact on all of our communities. So I, I agree with that, with Chief Morales on that.
Thank you, Senator, Senator Garcia. And Senator Geller had a question in the chat, but I just want to make sure that we get it on the record. His question was, the North Rail, does it connect to existing Broward, the Broward Rail corridors? See, Mr. Morales, do you have an answer? Does the North Rail project, does that connect to any existing rails in Broward?
No, I mean, right now, obviously we don't have a rail corridor there and they, and they don't either. The notion, the idea would be that that 27th Avenue, which then continues into Broward, would be a very logical place if there was going to be a future regional line there. So no, this is trying to create new infrastructure for the future.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaufman has a question, you recognize?
Thank you. I, I know there are others here from Monroe County, I don't represent Monroe County, but I am a city commissioner from Key West and I really want to thank Commissioner Fur for bringing this up. I do agree with Chief Morales and this, and the Senator, we, you know, here in Monroe County, we are, you know, we're at the mercy of you all to the north. And so we really want, from my perspective, we really want to support septic to sewer. You know, we have our AWT and we've talked about before how important this is. My question really is to you, Chair Bailey, can we, can we convene a workshop or some, or some special meeting on AWT and the prospects for the future or sewer in general? And maybe Commissioner Fur would chair the, the workshop and, because, you know, he, he really brings an important voice that, that we appreciate here in Monroe County, especially how it affects the reef and, and our community, because really we're at the mercy of, of you all up, up on the mainland.
Great, thank you for that. And it's funny, it reminds me of the, the Alabama, Georgia, Florida war about the waters. And so I, I think this is a very, very important conversation and I'm excited that we're having it. And I, and I like the idea of have, having workshops going forward because like, we're truly convening the region and we're talking about things that really bring us together and, and issues that we can tackle. And so I do look forward to some type of workshop and I'll definitely work with Isabel going forward on doing that. And so the, the goal of today, so we, we've now heard the, the presentation from Miami-Dade County about their priorities. Is there any public comment before we go into Broward? Because the goal is. Because the goal is, we look at all of them, and we adopt one package. We do not have anything presented from Monroe County at the moment, but they will have something submitted by the time of our April 16 meeting. And I would like for the council to possibly trust what they'll put together and vote without seeing it, but they, of course, you don't have to go that way. So, Senator Geller, it looks like you have a comment before we move to Broward?
Chairman, sorry, I was just agreeing that septic to sewer is regional, because if my friend Renee says it is, I have to agree. That's not the only reason.
Okay.
Hey, good, Mr. Chair, I would just like to say, this was never intended to be an exhausted list of priorities, or, I mean, in reality, there was not a lot of time for folks to respond, so what we got was, was good. But I would just say, there's more out there that might be identified as we move forward, particularly if we're having a conversation later with.
Yeah. Chair Bailey?
Yes, you recognize.
Well, one of the questions that I think that Doug Smith had brought up, that may have been, that was regional in nature, I think, has to do with this a little bit, because it has to do with waste treatment and the biosolids, and where, and which biosolids, and the fact that for Broward, lots of our biosolids are going up into Palm Beach and up into Martin County, Okoachobee. I do not know where Miami Dade County's sludge ends up, and maybe Jimmy can help me out on this, because I think that was, that was one of the things that we were trying to figure out, because, because of the north, the counties to the north of us are kind of balking at us sending all our sludge up there, at least in its current, because right now, Broward only has Class B sludge. So, I understand why they don't want that. So, Jimmy, do you, do you have any idea where all your sludge is going? Is it going north? Because that's, that's the end result of the septic to sewer. That's, you know, they're connected.
It sounds like, let me just make sure, before we, we recognize Mr. Morales. So, things like, Councilmember Fur, you like to at some point have the biosolid and wastewater treatment addressed for Miami Dade County in a regional solution, and so, you're asking to see kind of, to kind of see where they are now, to see if we at some point should tackle it into our larger product. Is that correct?
And the reason is because Broward has the same issue. Or where we end, where we put all our biosolids is an issue, and the class of biosolids that we have is an issue. So, if Miami Dade has the same issue, and Martin County is, you know, they're not complaining, they're concerned. Cypress Lake, Blue Cypress Lake, almost had to be closed because of where we had put a bunch of biosolids. So, there were issues with where our biosolids were landing, they've since addressed some of it. But we're connected that way, you know, so there's a regional issue there.
Yeah, one more thing, Councilmember Fur, if you can get together a list of, of like specific question that you, because I think this also needs to be further workshop, because, so I'm going to allow Mr. Morales to speak on it, and, but we want to put him on the spot, so there's stuff that he may or may not be able to answer, because he didn't have like.
Oh, I know, I know. I've heard a lot about it.
Yeah, no, no, it's fine. I think we should definitely have a workshop on these things. So, before, we're going to allow Mr. Morales to answer that, and then we'll go on to Broward County for their presentation. So, Mr. Morales, if you can answer the question as it relates to your wastewater treatment biosolids, where, pretty much, where is it going? Where are you guys, as it relate to?
Yeah, let me first say that, you know, I think Isabel was right when she said, you know, this, this is not an exhaustive, exhaustive list. I mean, if you would ask me for five, I would have given you five, you know, I mean, proposals. I mean, we have, as we all know, a lot of regional, this is another one, solid waste issues, landfills that are, you know, reaching end of life, you know, we've got three of those. I mean, so there's, there's a lot of those regional type issues. Debbie, do you want to, I'm going to, I'm going to punt to you, like any good leader, I'm going to delegate. So, Debbie, if you could address some of those issues.
Thank you. Debbie, you recognize?
Sure, can you hear me okay with my audio? Can you hear me? It's unmuted. Okay, wonderful. Yes, we have similar issues, we are tracking the biosolids north. We do have three research projects right now going on, though, looking at different technologies and options to work with our biosolids, and we would be happy to include that in like a workshop discussion as well, more details on, on the challenges with biosolids and, and, you know, getting it to a grade of fertilizer that, that is optimal.
Great. Thank you. And thank you all for your short turnaround and getting identified to these projects, because I know times start to fly, and you got the information like not a long time ago. And so, thank you for being able to be here and bring these. And so, now, we're going to recognize Broward County for your, your two projects. Your one related to sea level rise, infrastructure, no, sea level rise or resiliency, and the other relating to infrastructure. So, who will be presenting from Broward County?
I will defer initially to Commissioner Fur. I don't think we actually have two specific projects. When we, when I contacted county administration, their response was actually non-responsive to our request. I would agree that the CNSF restudy is certainly what I regard as the biggest issue in Broward, because it's existential. Without this, Broward County, which was carved out of the Everglades, will very shortly return to the Everglades, because we will be unable to drain. But this is only a $20 million project. So, while I want to say only 20 million, sounds like a laughable term, but when you're comparing it to the hundreds of millions of the others, I don't think that's some, that's something. I mean, we're, if I had my brothers, I'd try and take a bunch, big chunk of the money and try and pour it into economic development in terms of research. I'd love to see us better seed, for example, the Marine Research Hub, which is truly regional in nature, because the member universities are in Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach County. And I think some of the research, I know some that goes on in Monroe, but that's also not a hundreds of millions of dollar project. So, I'm going to owe to Commissioner Fur, because I don't know which of the ones that Broward has specifically come up with are in such great amount that, that we're talking of this scale. Beam, do you have any ideas?
Thank you, Senator Geller. And Commissioner Fur, you recognize, so you can pick that from there.
Well, I think, I think all of us, I mean, the USGS study, the CNSF study has to be on the top of our list for all of us, because we, like Commissioner Geller said, we're not going to be here without, if we don't take care of that. And that's a 10-year window, according to what our, this is our resilience. If we're going to have a resiliency project together, there's nothing that is, I can imagine above this, because our estimates of the, according to our staff, is we've got a 10-year window before a number of those pumping stations are overflowed. That's, that, we don't have a choice on this one. That's, we have a six-inch window, and by the time the sea level rises six inches, those, that gravity-fed system does not work. It's as simple as that. So, this study should have been happening 10 years ago, and so, we need to put this on the front burner with everything we got, because it's going to require, once, we already know what that study is going to say. That study is going to say, as quick as you can, build some pumping stations. That's what it's going to say. I mean, we, the, the thing is, we have to go through this process, but that's, you know, that has to be on the top of our list for, on a regional basis. I can't imagine it not being. But second, and I do think that the Coastal Link should be right up there as well. I mean, if I, if I'm going to pick two, I'm going to pick those two. I mean, all those other things are important, the biosolids is, is way up there, the outfalls, the septic to sewer, those are huge, and I think all of us recognize that, and, but without the other two, I mean, without the resiliency study, forget it. You know, that's got to be number one, in my opinion.
Thank you. Are there any questions from any council member on the two projects that are being submitted by Broward County, which are the CNSF study and also the Coastal Link?
Yes, me?
Well, that's, you recognize?
Thanks. It's, it's more than the actual restudy. Colonel Kelly, who's the regional commander of the Army Corps, has said that from the day that it gets funded, it will be 10 years before, if we're lucky, and he said, our optimum date on that is, is 10 years. So, it's much more than just the restudy. The restudy tells us, you know, what to do, because they said you can't just raise the salinity control barriers. I want everybody to understand how serious this is. You know, all of western Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach drain out to the ocean. They were Everglades, and if they can't drain, they will become Everglades again, which some people may think it's a good idea, except we do have millions of people living there. And right now, the Colonel Kelly told us that under our most optimistic scenario, we, it's barely possible we might make it. And it's more, the restudy is the, is the chief part. That's the study. After the study, they have to actually figure out a solution and do the construction. So, that's why the restudy, I think, is the 20 million. The fixing part is going to be more, and the problem is, I originally thought, so all we have to do, because the salinity control structures are about to be overtopped because of sea level rise, meaning we can no longer drain, and people said, well, can't we just raise the, the structures so that they don't get overtopped? And the answer is, you raise the structures, then you can't drain the west, because they'll act as dyke. So, it's, I, I realize that not everybody has paid as much attention to this as perhaps Beam and I have, because in Broward, we recognize this is probably the biggest threat. But so, when we're saying the restudy, it's actually, the restudy is the chief part, it's the restudy and the fix that occurs, because I can't speak north of Palm Beach, but I know Dade, Broward, Palm Beach, at least, all of our western areas will be unable to drain if we don't both do the restudy and then do the construction afterwards. We get flooded, and I have no solution.
Thank you. And that's very important, and just to make sure I got clarification. So, you said 10 years, so, so 10 years minimum to start the construction?
Yeah. Colonel Kelly said that the restudy would do that. Actually, he was not clear as to whether the 10 years included construction, but since he doesn't know yet what the method is, that's why he said 10 years would be the most optimistic, because they don't, until they do the restudy, they won't know what the project, what the solution is. And by the way, he, they told us that there are typically around four or five projects that, once they pick the top 20 nationally, that qualify, they will actually only fund four or five of them. As of now, we haven't yet even been designated as in the top 20. So, and, and as I said, the 10 years, he said, was under our most optimistic scenario, and that's if we get funded this year.
Thank you for that clarification. Are there any other comments or questions from council members?
Isabel's hand is up, I think.
Sure, Isabel, you're, you recognize?
Yes, yeah, so, you know, the thought, when I was discussing this with Jennifer, Dr. Grotto, I was sort of thinking that maybe if we came up with the money to get the project started, that, that would be an impetus to get the project approved as a new start. And as a new start, then perhaps we could get reimbursed for the money that's put into move the project forward. I don't know, we'd have to investigate, but that was the thinking, because pursuant to our last meeting, where Commissioner Fur asked me to speak with Jim Merly to find out if there was an example in Miami Dade, having funded a federal project and then getting reimbursed, I did speak with Jim Merly, and he told me that the Miami River Commission had a project that Miami Dade paid for and with the expectation gave reimbursed, but it was already an approved project. So, it's whether, if we came up with a commitment for some financial support at the front end, would that help speed approval of the project officially into the Army Corps of Engineers work plan? That was the idea, who knows? So.
All right. Thank you for that follow-up, Isabel. And also, thank you for pulling all this together in such short notice, because we gave you a very tight window to line everything up, so thank you for making it happen, we really appreciate you. Any other comments regarding Broward? It looks like there are none, and also no public comments. So, here's what I would like to do at this point, if, if the council is amenable, I would like to have someone to have a motion to select the two projects submitted by Miami Dade, two projects submitted by Broward, and also allow whatever be submitted by Monroe County, because they, they have not submitted specifically what they will be presenting to be included in our packet that we'll take together as a council, as our priorities for, for council.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Mr. Fur would like to talk?
Mr. Chair?
Sure, you recognize, Mr. Goran?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're more in the nature of a workshop among our membership with others, with the, with the folks from other, other counties, et cetera. I know that the executive committee is sufficiently present as an executive committee to make a decision, as it were, but it's a recommendation only to the full board, so that you can probably adopt a consensus among your colleagues on the executive committee as a recommendation to the full board, but, but the consensus can be made part of the record today. There are others that are not part of the SFRPC, so that their decision-making would certainly be helpful to the cause, but it'd be your wish, Mr. Chair, to draw consensus among your colleagues. You do have membership from the executive committee that could at least on a workshop basis, adopt a consensus towards those projects, which I'd urge you to do.
Thank you, Mr. Goran. And so, and to adopt, one clarification, to adopt that, still, do I just ask for, what's the proper process for voting? Make sure.
I think that your membership would know that, that as opposed to making a motion, they can simply adopt a consensus decision, which either Mayor Geller, Senator Geller, or others could reach Mayor Ross, et cetera, having been down that road before. I think you'll have some, some consensus, but to articulate that by, by statement would be very useful, Senator Geller or Mayor Ross.
Could I ask Sam Goran to restate the motion, so I'm sure I clearly understand it?
Yep. It would be, Mr. Chair, to Senator Geller, that the intention of the executive committee is to, by consensus, adopt the proposals that were offered by the participants this morning as a recommendation from the executive committee to the full board, and, and move it from there, so that the full board can embrace it at the next meeting, but that their statements will be made a part of the record today.
So, are you referring to the two from Dade, the two from Broward, and the two that we haven't heard yet from Monroe?
Correct, to the extent that Broward has articulated them, and that Chief Morales has offered up his proposals as well. All of this is part of the public record, all of it's being recorded. We're kind of in an amorphous way of workshop, so to speak, except that our executive committee has some authority, but I think your consensus would support the answer as Mayor Geller has offered.
I'm a little concerned about adopt, making the recommendation to adopt something we haven't heard yet.
Right, right, and that's, and that's my concern, Senator, that, that there's one part that's still missing from the conversation.
Would it be appropriate for a move to approve the two Dade, the two Broward, and give very serious consideration of the two? Broward and give, uh, very serious, um, consideration of the two from Monroe whenever they're received?
So long as your consensus.
Like that. Uh, can I yield to Mayor Ross, who I see shaking his head?
I, 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 my concern was exactly yours in that I'm, I'm ready to vote on, on Broward and on Dade. I have no difficulty with that, but I've learned never to vote on something that's sight unseen. Um, and, and I just, you know, serious, even serious consideration of what? I can't, I can't do it until I hear it.
I'm just trying to be nice to Monroe.
No, I hear you.
Okay. And, and that's very fair. Um, so before we move forward, I, I want to see if there's anybody, if, do we have possibly a preview from, um, Monroe County? If not, maybe we'll find a way to, um, have a quick executive meeting to have them present because like, we're a tri-county, um, council and I, I just want to make sure that they can have their voice heard. And in very short notice, uh, the turnaround wasn't really long enough. And I'm very thankful that Broward and Miami Dade County were able to get something together and put it in front of us. Uh, and so I guess, well, now there's a consensus, so let's, let's tackle them separately. So we have a consensus to adopt Broward and Miami Dade without objection.
Sure. Commissioner Fur has his hand up, Chair Bailey.
Okay, I cannot see the hands for some reason. So, um,
The real hand, not a virtual.
Got it. So, um, there you go. That's why I was like, I cannot see it. So, Commissioner Fur, you're recognized.
Thank you. I, I think the point of today was not so much just the South Florida Regional Planning Council.
Right.
The point of today was trying to see what the two planning councils together could agree on, that, that we may go forward as a collective body and do that. We're going to have our own, the South Florida Regional Planning Councils, we're going to have our own, um, recommendations, you know, i- independent. But the, I think the point of today was, what is there anything? Or is, is there anything that those two councils together could agree on and go forward with? Because it, it, then it goes, um, to seven counties and, and 10 million people instead of just the South Florida Regional Planning Council. When, that's why, when you look at something like a Coastal Link or you look at the study, um, those are the kind of things that are that big. So, so it's not just Monroe. I just want to, I just want to kind of bring our focus back to why we're having this meeting. That's all.
Let me, let me make a comment before.
Wait, wait. I, I thought that this was the pre-meeting prior to the.
You're correct. You're correct, Senator. That's what I was going to say. So, so the reason why this meeting is, is we're called it. And so we can meet as a council before we go to the other council and make sure we are all agree, we're all aligned about what our priorities are. Uh, and so we're on the same page because we knew they, they had what they wanted. So we want to make sure that we got our ducks, um, in a row before we met with them. So the purpose of this was for, one second, uh, Isabel, the purpose of this meeting was to allow us to reach out to each of our, our counties and see what issues that they had, um, that were regional, um, that we can put forward as a council, um, when we meet.
Okay.
So, thank you. Isabel, you have it.
Yeah. Senator, go ahead.
I just want to be clear that at the regional one is when, because we only gave one day's notice. So, so, you know, when Monroe comes in, prior to our meeting with Treasure Coast, I want to be clear that we're, that of course, all of their priorities are also going to be given serious consideration, that it's not just, well, sorry, since you didn't get to us in one day, you've missed your opportunity. So while we're only today recommending the ones we discussed today, we're expecting that we will also be able to support ones from Monroe when we have the joint meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Correct. Let me, let me clarify some, before you go, Isabel. So, um, what's going to, what I'm liking to happen, we've seen Broward, we've seen Dade, we get, go ahead and have consensus and then we talk about having, we allow someone from Monroe to also present theirs. So we have not seen yet, but we allow them to present theirs at the, um, our, the meeting that we have, um, I think. Um, and so that's what I, I would like to happen. Isabel, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Bailey. So again, I always thought of this as sort of a first conversation, not the first and last conversation amongst us. And then obviously Chair Bailey is saying a bit additional input. We can certainly continue the conversation at our next council meeting, which is coming up later this month. I would like to recognize that Tom Lanahan, Executive Director of Treasure Coast Council, is available here if we want to hear from him. And we're also very fortunate to have, um, Catalina, Dr. Moran from the Water Management District, who you know is very up to speed and knowledgeable about flood protection and what the district is doing. So, and we also have Whitney Gray from the Department of Environmental Protection on the line. So there's a lot of resources available to you if you want to have additional input. Um, but certainly if you want to hear from the Treasure Coast, we have Tom on the line.
So there's a couple of things, Isabel. So I'll, too, because this is such short notice and I love that we have all the resources here. There are more questions. And so I think we should have an additional workshop and we ask these, our resources to come back and so we can have a, a, a more robust conversation. But for this meeting, because we have that, the Treasure Coast meeting right around the corner and we want to make sure that.
Yeah, we haven't set a date with Treasure Coast. This means to help us prepare to set a meeting.
So, great. So since we have the Treasure Coast here, um, Tom Lanahan, thank you for joining us, Tom. Got a question for you. How far away do you think, um, we could set the meeting with you and, and come up with consensus? Because I would like for us to possibly go ahead and have, um, Monroe's County item presented before us, before we meet with you guys. Because you guys, you pretty much, you know where you are and we just want to make sure as a council that we have heard from each of our counties before, uh, presenting to you guys. And also, uh, any other comments that you might have, we, um, go ahead. And thank you for joining us.
Sure. Thank you. Uh, thank you for the invitation. Um, and, uh, I'm, uh, let me just say, I'm, I'm absolutely thrilled with, uh, the, uh, the regional conversation that you all are having. This is, um, frankly, exactly what I had hoped, uh, could, could possibly happen by, you know, trying to spur this, uh, this, this conversation. Um, and that the perspective is very good, uh, in that there are, there are certainly, you know, infrastructure projects that on the face of them seem very local, uh, but, you know, as, as someone else wisely stated, water does not follow political boundaries. Uh, unless, you know, those couple of states we have that set their boundary on the Mississippi, but even then, you know, it goes from one bank to the other, right? So, uh, it, it, that's, that's a huge issue, uh, for us, uh, as well. Uh, and so the things that relate to health of the reef are very important, um, in our region as well. Uh, and, you know, I, I think, um, you know, the, the, the conversation about the restudy is certainly significant, um, at least for, uh, Palm Beach County, uh, in, in our region, um, and potentially north of there, but I know Palm Beach County and southwards, uh, it's very significant. Uh, and, um, you know, touching on the, uh, Coastal Link, um, project as well, um, there is a, a piece of regionally impactful infrastructure, uh, that is the giant question mark on that project, which is the New River, uh, in the center of Broward. That is the, a scale of a project that, uh, you know, um, that's, that's a, a, a lifetime, uh, once in a lifetime project, uh, that, that is an enormous, uh, undertaking, uh, that is the, the key that unlocks, uh, the whole East Coast, uh, for passenger, uh, commuter passenger rail. Um, so we, you know, I would, I would say we would think that is important as well. The kind of conversation you are having, um, we have only, um, touched on, uh, at our council. Um, you know, I raised this, uh, call to think higher and think bigger, um, just at our most recent meeting, uh, and, um, you know, kind of gave it out, and our chair kind of gave it out as some homework, uh, for everybody to come back with some ideas and, and, and thoughts along those lines. So, um, I think we'll have some more discussion about that at my, uh, my next meeting. Uh, and then it, kind of, you had a question as far as, you know, setting our next, our next conversation. Um, I, I don't, at this point, I, I think it will be difficult to pull off before the end of May. Um, so we're probably looking, um, you know, a little after that, um, as soon as we can, but, um.
Mr. Lanahan, I need to stop you. One second. Mr. Lanahan, one quick second. So Senator Geller is going to have to leave and I apologize to come back to you. And now that, because our meeting is May 24th, and so that means that we can actually convene and have the Monroe there. And so Senator Geller, before you leave, um, is it possible that we can go ahead and have consensus for the, um, Broward and Dade item presented? Okay. The item has been moved. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Ross, second it. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Are there any public comments? Seeing on the item has been moved, probably second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposition? Seeing none, we have adopted our Miami Dade and, um, Broward priorities. Um, take care, Senator Geller. And it looks like, um, um, before, um, Mr. Lanahan said that they will not be meeting to the end of May, and he can pull off to the end of May was sexy perfect because our meeting's May 24th. And so it looks like we're going to have Monroe County to present at our May 24th meeting. And so we're going to go back to you, Mr. Lanahan.
Um, great. Thank you. Um, I, I, I don't, hopefully I answered your, uh, your, your question. Uh, I, I rambled for a piece of the middle, but hopefully I, I, I got all that. I think this is, um, this is fantastic. Uh, wonderful effort you all are doing. I appreciate it.
Thank you. You answered everything perfectly. So thank you. So, okay, are there any other, um, comments from our council members before?
Yeah, now that Steve's gone, I have a whole bunch of other ideas.
That did not sound right.
Just kidding.
Great. Well, thank you, um, again, everyone for being, um, present at this meeting. Um, we will have, um, Monroe County hopefully presenting at our council meeting and then we'll have an additional, another workshop to really tackle, talk about some of these other issues and how we can work together, um, as a multi-county organization really addressing these issues. Isabel, thank you so much for getting everybody here. I know it was really tough last minute. Uh, thank you for making it happen. Um, without objection, um, Mayor Ross moved that we rise. The meeting is adjourned. Take care.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Take care, Isabel.
Thanks, Isabel. Good job.
Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate your help, everyone.